Good evening, everyone. It is five o'clock on Monday, October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and I am calling the regular Wausau School District Board of Education meeting to order. Ms. Peck, roll call, please.
Sarah Barak, John Krescher, Nick Krescher, Pat McKee, Jennifer Paoli, Corey Sellers, Lance Trollope, Jim Boucher.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It is the mission of the Wausau School District to advance student learning, achievement, and success. Alrighty, Agenda Item Number Five. This week and today, the Office of the Governor sent out a proclamation. Whereas Native Americans have inhabited this continent and this region since time immemorial, and whereas Wisconsin is home to twelve Native Nations, and whereas throughout Wisconsin's history, indigenous leaders have defended the land, protected the water, and championed Native rights, sovereignty, and prosperity, and in doing so, have promoted the health and well-being of the environment and people in every corner of the state. And whereas the immense historical, cultural, and contemporary significance of the indigenous peoples of this region cannot be understated or undervalued, and an important part of recognizing indigenous heritage and culture is also recognizing the centuries of colonization, exploitation, oppression, and systematic racism, systemic racism, that indigenous peoples have endured and continue to endure at the hands of institutions and state and federal governments, including the trauma inflicted upon Native children, families, and communities by federal Indian boarding school policies. And whereas the state of Wisconsin has been a proud, has been proud to partner with the Native Nations on a number of initiatives, including those to promote economic, workforce, and community development, and to recommit itself to the principles of respectful and cooperative communication in government-to-government relations with Native Nations, stressing the importance of collaboration to help improve the planning and delivery of state services to tribal governments, tribal communities, and tribal citizens, while recognizing Native Nations sovereignty and promoting the inclusion of Native Nations and tribal perspectives in the work of state agencies. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in nineteen seventy-seven by the International Conference on Discrimination Against the Indigenous Population in the Americas, and in October, two thousand and nineteen, it was established in Wisconsin via Executive Order Fifty to be observed statewide on the second Monday of every October. And whereas on this occasion, the state of Wisconsin strongly encourages all schools, businesses, organizations, public institutions, and local governments to recognize the countless contributions of indigenous peoples, celebrate indigenous cultures and heritages, incorporate awareness of indigenous history, culture, and tribal sovereignty into their everyday practices, and cultivate strong relationship with indigenous peoples and Native Nations across the state. And whereas today, the state of Wisconsin stands in solidarity with indigenous peoples, reaffirms its commitment to closing the equity gap through policy and practice, and pledges to respect the inherent sovereignty of all Native Nations and partner with them to ensure indigenous people can thrive in Wisconsin. Now therefore, I, Tony Evers, Governor of the State of Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five as Indigenous Peoples' Day throughout the state of Wisconsin, and I commend this observance to all our state's residents. In testimony whereof, I have here on two set my hand and caused the great seal of the state of Wisconsin to be affixed, done at the Capitol in the city of Madison this seventh day of October. Signed by Tony Evers, our governor. Now, as I continue. Agenda Item Number Six, Excellence in Action. We have the opportunity to hear from our principal at Wausau East High School, Mr. Barth, to tell us a little bit about Wausau East and the beginning of the school year.
All right, good afternoon. Once again, Luke Barth, principal, proud principal here at Wausau East High School, and it's really an honor to be here with three amazing students to talk a little bit about who we are, what we do here at Wausau East. I did want to highlight before I turn it over to the kids that each year we develop SIP plans, which is a continuous improvement plan, and each year we have chosen to do three, one around academics, one around culture, and one around leadership. And one of the big pieces here at Wausau East is connectedness to the building. We want students to be connected on every level, activities, organizations, clubs, athletics. And we noticed that our students were involved in one activity, but we really only had about twenty-three percent of our students that were included in two or more activities. So we wanted to increase that percentage by eight points, and we, last year, through Club Dash and announcements and really getting in front of our kids, we increased that data point by twenty-two percent. So right now, this year, we have forty-five percent of our students participating in two or more activities, athletics, clubs, organizations. So to highlight a little bit, to turn it over to the amazing people, to talk a little bit about academics, culture, and leadership.
Hello, everyone. My name is Maddie Murphy, and I'm a senior here at Wausau East. With my time here today, I would like to talk about the Ivy academics I have been involved in and the teachers here at East who have supported me through it all. Entering high school, I was placed in and chose to pursue most classes at the Ivy level. Ivy classes have helped me grow as a person and as a learner, but I attribute most of my growth to my amazing teachers. Ivy classes are often difficult and maybe overwhelming at times, and as sports, academics, and clubs, my teachers have always been understanding and helpful. As an East student, I am often reminded of how lucky I am to be in a fulfilling and empowering environment. I would like to focus on my English IB2 teacher and yearbook advisor, Ms. Waller. Ms. Waller has created such a safe and welcoming environment in her classroom that I have often spent many days excited to walk into her class, knowing that when I get there, she will always greet me with a smile and a hug if needed. I have gotten the privilege of having Ms. Waller as my teacher all four years of high school, between English and yearbook, and I couldn't be happier. I would also like to focus on my world history teacher, who is my cross-country coach and my track coach. Mr. Olson has helped me to succeed at East for both academics and athletics, and he has become a teacher that I can always rely on. Even though I no longer have him as a teacher, I often find myself going to his classroom because it is a place of support for me. As a senior, knowing I have limited time left here at East, I couldn't be happier that I got to experience high school as a lumberjack. The school spirit, the energy, and the excitement at East has been unforgettable, and it has made my high school experience something I have come to be very grateful for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nyajong Gulumbe ya, Tumbalina. Hello, my name is Tumbalina. I will be talking about my experience with cultural identity and how this school has assisted me throughout my journey. I have struggled with connecting with my culture because of my identity as a Hmong American. I am not Hmong enough for my elders, but not American enough for my friends. I live somewhere in the middle, and at times I felt that I wasn't going to have a place. Wausau East High School, Youth Culture Club, and the Hmong Dance Club gave me that place. It has definitely been a way for me to connect with my culture from where I stand. I can socialize with Hmong students and others that feel the same way I do. Through Hmong Dance Club, I can display my culture through performance, which has helped me with my confidence. The support of the Wausau East staff has allowed the dance club to perform for the school, and they even joined us on a dance. It's wonderful to have this much encouragement over something that I thought I was alone on. Additionally, this year, I became an officer of the Youth Culture Club, and it has taught me leadership skills, public speaking skills, and articulating my ideas to the president, my advisor, and eventually the admin team, who will have to approve of the events we will do. Because of the opportunities at Wausau East, I am also the Homecoming Assembly MC. Youth Culture Club is a way to bring awareness and support for the different cultures we see at Wausau East High School, in the school district and the Wausau community as a whole. It's a great way for me to experience being a leader, and it is something that I love. I love my culture, and Wausau East High School has empowered all of us to make a difference, be a leader, and celebrate each other's uniqueness. Thank you.
And by the way, you speak very well in public. Congratulations.
Hello, everyone. My name is Gavin Marium. I'm a junior at Wausau East High School, and I'm here today to talk about mental health awareness and the positive support for this important topic from Wausau East High School. Mental health is not something that you can just brush off or not acknowledge. It is here, it is real, and it affects the everyday person. Being part of the Wausau East Raiser Voice Club has empowered me to speak up and raise awareness for youth mental health. As co-president and two years with Raiser Voice, we have accomplished a lot. Raiser Voice has been met with Superintendent Dr. Jill Underly to talk about mental health budgets in school. Additionally, last year, Wausau East held a survivor of domestic violence, Ashley Van Dixon. She spoke to the entire student body about healthy relationships, what it's like to be in a toxic relationship, how to get help. Additionally, Raiser Voice has held multiple community events, including the annual mental health run and walk, which raised over three thousand dollars for mental health awareness last May. Furthermore, Raiser Voice has empowered me to take action on federal levels, with me being chosen to represent Seesaw District Number Nine in the Youth Mental Wellness Champions Program, which is a branch of the Government Office of Children's Mental Health. And in May, I'll go to the Capitol to talk about mental health to state legislators. Wausau East having this club has made a positive impact on the school. Because of the support, our student body is aware that mental health is real and there are resources available. With the incredible staff who are willing to learn and be trained on how to be supportive teachers to students in our school through green bandana training and signs of suicide training, along with our principal, Mr. Barth, our counseling and building staff as a whole, they have empowered Raiser Voice and myself to have a voice to make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you for your efforts. That's a lot of work. Mr. Barth, you have some final comments?
I don't, except for that I'm extremely proud of who we are here and our students each and every day. This is just three examples of just the wonderful kids that we have, so. Any questions?
Board members? Well, thank you very much for bringing these three students to articulate what's going on here to us. We appreciate that greatly. Thank you. Continuing on, Excellence in Action. Franklin Elementary School Principal Krista Treter is going to talk a little bit about what's going on at Franklin. I was thinking Lincoln in my mind for some reason. But we'll go to Franklin.
I can't tell you much about Lincoln, but I can tell you about Franklin, so. Good evening. As he mentioned, my name is Krista Treter. I am in my second year of being a principal at Franklin Elementary. A little background, I started my teaching career thirty-two years ago at Hawthorne Hills Elementary, then taught at Riverview, and then went to Mooganee to teach, and came back last, the previous, last year, before, when there was an opening at Franklin, and interviewed for the position, and walked in for the interview at Franklin Elementary, and I just like wanted that job so bad because I felt like it's really like full-circle moment for me. I did some work at Franklin while I was at Hawthorne, and I love the building. I love the neighborhood. I just love everything about being at Franklin. So I really tried to narrow this down because we were given the time limit, five minutes, and positive things, so. We have a little photo that I did make somebody call on top of the roof to take, so I hope that was nothing against district policy, but I didn't know how else to get a photo at in-service, so right after we had that awesome kickoff here and we went there, I said, "Everybody out to the playground," and I don't know.
As long as you had safety belts on.
Absolutely, harness, three-point harness, so. Starting here at that kickoff, the energy was just so contagious, and there was so much excitement for Hawthorne staff coming over. We had a few from other buildings, but mostly from Hawthorne coming over and joining the Franklin staff, and it's just been a great builder for our staff. We have more people to collaborate with at grade levels, and truly, I felt like looking at the smiles, like even whether there's strong days or whatever our days look like, everybody is still like really supportive of each other and enjoys being there. So I'm going to just look back to have a little bit of data and talk about last year, three points, where we ended in the spring, what we're focusing on this year, and where we're at now with October, two thousand and twenty-five. So we do something, where we ended last spring is we do an MRA, a measurable results assessment, because our district, because we're a school that uses leader in me, and I picked the top two scores of what we had, that we had on the assessment. A growth, a typical growth from the previous school year would be two to three points, and last year, in the spring, our student empowerment went up eleven points. And I was like, "That's great." And then when we got together and looked at the data, other principals were like, "That's amazing." Like, you know, it's like two to three points is typical, and I'm like, "That is really amazing." Like, very exciting to see. And it would just be the staff answered the question on the survey in response to this supportive environment for students. And we just really worked on last year, what could we do to give students some of that, like take the leader in me components, and give them the opportunities, whether they're in kindergarten, third grade, fifth grade, to have some leadership that was appropriate for their level. Our other highest score was in our school climate. We had an eighty-three percent on, if you want to go back just one slide. We had an eighty-three percent in this question was answered by students in grades three, four, and five. And again, that was an increase from the previous year, and I think it just really shows that we are really headed in the right direction at the end of the school year. So moving forward, looking at our focus for this year, took a different twist when we realized that we would be coming in as a combined school, so taking the data from both schools, but just kind of simplifying what our focus is. We have a school improvement plan, but just to kind of sum that up, our focus for this year, combining two student bodies into one school and working together to meet the needs of all the kids, which is a pretty lofty focus, but I, we know it's something that needs to happen in our building, and we know it's something that we can achieve. If you look at, like, how do you measure culture in October? So with some brainstorming with some of my colleagues, they're like, "Why don't you just ask the staff, like, one word?" So on the next slide, where we are now, you go one more. I asked them, I'm like, "Hey, if nobody's willing to make the school board presentation for me, you have to give me at least one word about the culture at Franklin," and the words came flying in. And it was really exciting for me to see that, I mean, we have some hard days. I'm not going to lie about that, but at the end of the day, this is how people are feeling in our building, and it's because we are there for the kids. It's because we are there supporting each other. It's because we know putting two schools together is going to have some challenges, and probably supportive and inclusive and empower were repeated. A lot of these words were repeated, and I just thought this really sums up where our culture is at with, this was a staff, when I reached out to staff. I did want to show, just share a little bit of a snapshot. I didn't have any students come in today, but on the next slide, we have monthly family nights because we are a Title I school. This is something that happens every month, and I think this is a really important part of our culture because we have a lot of staff members that just show up and stay after to be at those, to meet the families and to be with the kids and to have the kids see them outside school. I have a third-grade guy, man, teacher named Mr. Lammer, and he's just this big bearded guy, and he's scooping up ice cream the other day at our thing, and the kids were like, "Mr. Lammer, you scoop ice cream?" And he's like, "Yes, I do." Like, just for the kids to come in the building and see a different atmosphere has been really nice. And we look forward, we have a family night at Boys and Girls Club this week, and then every month, we have a family night, and I think that helps with the culture, with our families, our staff, and our students. And then the empowerment for the students, one of the things that we are working on monthly, at least monthly, and sometimes it's every other week, so twice a month, are Classroom Buddies, where we take our fifth grade and pair them with second grade. Our fourth grade goes with first grade, and our third grade goes with kindergarten. And there's, sometimes it's the same activity, sometimes there's something different. Sometimes the older kids will have something planned that they can go in and teach the kids. It was really successful last year, and we started with it right off the bat this year, and just going into the classrooms and having the kids work together and just having that blending of the different grade levels has been really cool to see. And I think last year's score was a little higher because the kids really valued some of their experiences, like safety patrols, doing announcements, doing a newsletter, doing Classroom Buddies. Everybody at each grade level had something that they felt like they were a leader in. So I attribute some of that success last year, and I am continuing, hoping to that continues for this year. So that's us, and our saying this year is, "We all belong here, we are better together." And I feel like it's something that's embraced daily by all our staff, and it's something we are working every day on getting our students to understand. We would love for you to come in and visit and see what we're all about because we just have a lot of fun energy going on, and I think you would just really enjoy coming and spending a lunch or coming and spending some time at Franklin, so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Treter. Any questions from the board, any comments? Thank you for your presentation. Greatly appreciated. Agenda Item Eight, Public and Student Comment.
There is none.
There is none. Alrighty. I will continue to move along. Agenda Item Nine, Approved Consent Agenda. This includes appointments, additional staff, replacement staff, contract increases, separations, resignations, contract decreases, terminations, leaves of absence, retirements, minutes from regular session of September eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, special session of September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, special session of September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five, and special session of September twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. It's a very busy month. Next, Payment to Bills, Budget Status and Investment Reports, School Board Member Salaries, and Donations to the District. They are, those donations are. Hub International, VFW Burns Post Three Eighty-Eight, Mr. and Mrs. Brzezinski, Wendy Fox and Friends from the First Presbyterian Church, Poland Chiropractic, American Online Giving Foundation, Sheldon Rouse, American Family Cup, Cheddar Box Charities, Bethany Baptist Church, Michael Moan, The Needle Workshop, Kyle and Elizabeth UTEC, and Wausau Marathon. I'm seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda with great gratitude for the donations to the district. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda Item Ten, Wausau School Board will be conducting interviews with qualified electors of the Wausau School District to fill a vacancy to the Wausau School Board. This vacancy is for an unexpired term and will be for a term commencing on October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and running through April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-six. I will share that each candidate will have a time limit of five minutes for their statement. Following that, if you have anybody here that would like to speak on your behalf, they will have three minutes at that time. Candidates are also given the opportunity to have qualified electors of the Wausau School District make statements. And the electors will have a time limit of three minutes for their statement. So at this time, I'm going to call Cody Nicolai, and Cody, you can walk right up and go to that table over there. Cody, I'm first. Okay, so we're going to start with the, after the candidates, we're going to go right down the line, we're going to give the opportunity to make a statement, and then, once the statements are done, then we are going to roll into the questions, correct? Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. I want to thank you again for being here. So first off, like I said, I want to thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to come again and speak with you. I mean, you guys all know my history. I think most of you guys, except for you two, were on the board when I was on the board last. I felt very honored to be on the board. I thought that it was a good experience for me, and I think that I was able to contribute, and I really appreciate this opportunity to try to do that again. I think my past being on the board provides some unique opportunities for that. I mean, I was through there when we were talking about consolidation, et cetera, and I know there's a lot of challenges coming up for the district, especially with deferred maintenance, some other things coming forward. At this point, though, I did take time and I reviewed all these little letters of support and recommendation. Charles, I want to say your letters were phenomenal. They did nothing but support you and give you good props, which I totally agree with. The other candidate, not so much, and I was very disappointed when I read through those letters. They were, in my opinion, very sexist and very tacky of myself and Mr. Berger here. And I feel that any candidate that has that kind of support really is not necessarily the best person to be divisive on this board. With the challenges you guys are going to face coming up in the future, you need a united board that's going to be willing to tackle these tough decisions going forward. And I feel very disheartened by some of these comments. "Oh, in the school, I was too quiet on the board when I was on." You know, sometimes a wise man doesn't need to say much. "I was, don't have kids in the district." Well, I'm a taxpayer, and I care about the future of Wausau, and our future are the children, and I think that when you care about the education of these children, it doesn't matter if you have kids here or not. What matters is that I care about this city, and I want to live in this city. I want my children to live in this city, and we're creating future leaders here, and part of that is what we do on the school board. So at this point, again, I want to commend Mr. Berger for his comments, and at this time, I'm going to withdraw my candidacy because I think he is a very qualified candidate, and I think he'll do a good job. He's aware of the challenges, and I don't need divisive kind of comments anymore. I just don't need people to attack me with hearsay and judgments they know nothing about. So that note, I do thank you for your time, and I really, really appreciate this opportunity, and I guess we'll see you maybe in April when I run, all right? And I want to say that there were people that did, you know, run and lose. Yeah, I ran and I lost, but I also won, and we took down some major players when we won. And Jane Roche, who was unfortunately left the board, lost as well and came back and won. So for what it's worth, I think it's just really kind of unfair, and let's keep unity. No more sexist comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Cody. Appreciate that. Charles Berger?
Thank you. Thank you, board. I want to thank everybody for this good evening, and I want to invite all the fellow community members that are watching online that aren't with us tonight, the parents and students of the district. As you said, my name is Charles Berger. I'm honored to stand before you again the second night. Two weeks ago, we were all in T-shirts, and it's feeling like fall again. You know, with so many dedicated individuals stepping up and sharing the microphone tonight, I just want to share my unique experiences and passion to our district that would help make me the right choice for you. As we did read those letters that were submitted on my behalf, and I've got some people to speak tonight, I was humbled when Superintendent Bushman read them. It was amazing to see the high regard that other people held me in and also the level that they, that bar that they set for me, making sure that I'm there. So for over thirty years, I've built a career working with some of the world's largest Fortune 500 companies. I've worked with district, school districts around the country, universities, healthcare, state and local governments, specializing in IT and solving complex problems, contract negotiation, and making sure that stakeholder management is being met. In these types of environments where downtime is unacceptable, I've learned to navigate complex challenges from optimizing any type of the budgetary aspects of it to ensure every voice is heard and also valued. These skills aren't just corporate, they're directly applicable to our school board. As we face significant budget constraints here in Wausau, I bring the insight to make those tough decisions that maximize resources without compromising quality. I've assisted in negotiating contracts that saved organizations millions while fostering collaboration, and I know how to apply those vendor deals that we all try to do that fund allocations and partnerships that will benefit our schools. Let's be clear, our greatest asset isn't aligned in the budget. It's our teachers, our support personnel, and district staff. They are the heart of this district, the dedicated professionals who inspire, shape, and reshape our children's future every day. I've seen firsthand how their passion translates into exceptional educational opportunities. By prioritizing their needs through better support, professional development, and fair compensation, we enable their success, which in turn drives student achievement. In my professional life, I've excelled at balancing stakeholder interests, and on the board, I'd advocate fiercely for our educators while keeping parents, students, and taxpayers in mind. What fuels my commitment most, though, is personal. As a proud father of five children who have all passed through or are in our Wausau schools, I've witnessed the profound impact of this district. My eldest is thriving in college, building on the strong academic foundation she gained here. Our son serves our nation honorably in the US Army, equipped with the discipline and skills instilled from an early age. He now commands cutting-edge technology with honor and respect. My third, he found his calling in the trades. My third, he found his calling in the trades, thanks to all the hands-on applications and the different classes he found at Wassa West. It really sparked his potential and he's thriving in it. With two still navigating their paths through our schools, I'm excited to see where life leads them. All five started their journeys right here in Wassa, all at South Mountain, all from pre-K. Learning not just the facts but resilience, curiosity and a love for lifelong growth. As we all know, learning, learning never ends. It's a continuous adventure that begins in our classroom and extends far beyond. If elected, I'll bring my expertise, empathy and unwavering dedication to assure every student in Wassa has the same opportunities that my children did. Together, we continue, we can continue to build a bright future for our district. I want to thank everybody again for your time tonight. Thank you for your consideration again. Thank you to all the people that wrote and are going to be speaking on my behalf. I truly appreciate your time and look forward to talking with you all in a little bit. Thank you.
Would you mind introducing your people that are going to be speaking?
Oh, yes, yes. I've got Susie Rochetto and also Paul Harold to speak on my behalf.
Hello, everyone. My name is Susie Rochetto. I just first want to speak to Wassa East High School. I had three students graduate from here, three children. My second is, was a full IB student and she is now a fourth-year medical student. And she will tell you that Wassa East IB program prepared her very well. So I just had to speak to that. It was exciting to hear that young lady. Anyway, also, I'd like to just take a minute to thank each of you, board members, for serving the youth and families of the Wassa community in this capacity. I know you give a lot of your time and effort and your commitment and so I just want to say thank you. This evening, I'm here to just say a few words in support of my friend Charles Berger. I have come to know Charles over the past few years, primarily as a customer at our retail store here in Wassa. We have definitely appreciated his support for our local family business. Anyone who knows Charles understands that he has an amazing amount of energy and he uses that energy volunteering in various capacities in the Wassa community. He has a servant's heart and seems to always be giving of his time for an organization or sports team that one of his children are involved in. In fact, this past weekend, he was teaching kids, I know he's part of Works or Volunteers for the DNR, and he taught kids all weekend, hunter safety. Other qualities that Charles has are that he is an idea generator and a problem solver. He tries to improve things in a positive way. In fact, he has often given me suggestions for improving our business or building on current strengths in our store and I have really appreciated his suggestions. I know Charles to be a man of faith, integrity and uprightness and I believe these qualities along with his ability to generate ideas would be a benefit for the students and the school community. Charles is a lifelong member of this community, graduating from Wassa East High School. He has children in the district and I believe he is the, has the best interests of the community in mind. So I urge you to consider him for the open board position. Thank you.
Thank you, Susie. Welcome, Paul.
Thank you. I'll be really brief because I believe I tried to submit online. It was submitted, so I'll just be very brief. As unfortunate it is that we are filling a board seat midterm, I was really pleased by the community response, right? We looked at these candidates and they offer a variety of different experiences and capabilities and I feel really good about moving forward, knowing that we need a strong board to carry the messaging regarding future funding and operational referendum. Tonight, I'd like to express my support for Charles Berger to be selected for the open board seat. Charles offers a unique perspective. We speak of advancing student learning achievement and success and he referenced his three children that are graduates, all taking different paths to success. And his familiarity with the curriculum and the staff to support that, I think, is outstanding. Whether they're pursuing further education, serving our country or going directly into the workforce through trades. I believe he brings that unique perspective. He also demonstrates a passion and support for students with countless hours of volunteering. He doesn't just speak, he contributes his time. Professionally helps others solve technical and business issues. We know we're going to be confronted with those types of things in the near term. Add it all up, I believe Charles Berger would be an outstanding addition to the board to fulfill the remainder of this term and would ask that you strongly consider his candidacy.
Thank you very much, Paul. Ms. Gleason, Michelle.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and for your service, each of you, already giving your time, energy and work on this board. I have deep respect for the weight of your responsibility and the time, care and balance that it brings. I've been a resident of Wassa for 46 years and currently serve as the Development Director of the Community Foundation of North Central Wisconsin and as a licensed clinical social worker at the Center for Wellbeing. In both roles, I've devoted my career to strengthening lives through collaboration, innovation and compassion, values that I believe are essential in school board membership. Over the past two decades, I have had the privilege of leading and partnering with nonprofits and community initiatives that focus on connection, equity and responsible stewardship of resources. My work has centered on building strategic partnerships, ensuring fiscal responsibility and creating programs that connect resources to real human needs. One of the greatest gifts of my career has been the opportunity to truly understand our community, all of it. As a case manager at North Central Healthcare, I sat at kitchen tables in some of our community's most vulnerable homes with the families, listening to people's stories and helping them navigate barriers and hardships. I've witnessed firsthand behavioral challenges our teachers are concerned about today. Now, as a director with the Community Foundation, I work alongside some of our community's most generous families and business leaders to invest in solutions and strengthen local programs. The range of experience has given me a unique perspective and a deep respect for the full spectrum of our community and a genuine ability to represent it all. Like many, including Mr. Nicolai, I've grown weary of the divisiveness that has seeped into so many corners of public life. It doesn't serve our students. When adults are divided, they feel that divide. They deserve unity, respect and examples of collaboration. And I'll be honest, serving on a school board today carries a real risk, as many of you know. Opinions can become targets, people's words or votes can be misinterpreted. My family and my work are my priorities and I would never want to put that in jeopardy. But I also believe that leadership requires courage. The willingness to show up, listen deeply and work toward common ground, even when it's uncomfortable. I envision our Wassa schools where every child has the opportunity to learn, grow and feel a genuine sense of belonging and where every teacher feels supported, valued and confident in their work. I believe in fostering environments where learning is inspired by curiosity and where teachers have the tools and trust they need to do what they do best, help all students thrive. When students and educators alike feel seen and supported, the entire community benefits. If appointed, I would bring not only my professional experience but also my heart, a commitment to listening, learning and focusing on what's best for students above all else. My goal would be to help this board continue building trust, stability and a sense of shared purpose for our district. Thank you so much for your time, for your service and for considering my application. I'd be honored to work alongside all of you, continuing to build a strong and unified future for this Wassa School District. I have two guests with me today.
Thank you, Michelle.
Very excited to hear them speak. I have Mike Ray.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you. I understand the challenge that you are facing and quite honestly, I don't envy it. This is going to be a difficult decision and I definitely respect that. I am a proud parent of three individuals who graduated from the Wassa School District and it definitely greatly benefited them in all their paths towards success and very proud of that aspect. So I'm Mike Ray. In my work, my daytime job, I'm the Executive Director for the Aging and Disability Resource Center of Central Wisconsin. I am honored to have the opportunity to speak on behalf of my good friend and professional colleague, Michelle Gleason. In my opinion, there is no better candidate to fill the Wassa School Board seat than Michelle. I've had the great privilege of working with Michelle in a professional capacity and have seen firsthand the great attributes that she would bring to the Wassa School Board. These attributes include integrity. She is a person of her word, she is honest and she is determined to do good. She is highly intelligent, she is thoughtful and insightful and she is a problem solver. She's always seeking the best information in understanding the nuances of any situation before making a decision. She is pragmatic in her thinking. She is about practical solutions. She understands the importance of effective implementation and is skilled at finding realistic and achievable ways to reach goals. She has an unbelievable determination and competitiveness, I'll add. She is determined in spirit, her determined spirit is a quality that sets her apart. When Michelle commits to something, she sees it through. She is resilient in the face of obstacles and possesses a fierceness that ensures, a tenacity and fierceness that ensures progress. And above all, Michelle is kind. Her kindness is probably her greatest attribute. She was a genuinely kind person. She approaches every interaction with empathy, respect and deep understanding of human needs. Her compassionate nature will foster a positive and inclusive environment on the school board. Michelle Gleason is an exceptional candidate for this, for this position. Her intellectual abilities, her compassion, the desire to make the Wassa School District better, I highly recommend that you choose her as your candidate. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Good evening. I'm Tim Parker. I'm the CEO of the Community Foundation of North Central Wisconsin. I've known Michelle for nearly the entire five years that I've lived in Wassa. I moved here from Grand Rapids, Michigan. She's always impressed me with her leadership and relational skills. At Peaceful Solutions Counseling Center, she not only led the entire team and managed a difficult nonprofit budget, but she continued to counsel people at the same time. In fact, she is so skilled and effective that I hired her from Peaceful Solutions to bring her to the Community Foundation and that was one of the best decisions I've ever made. Michelle's passionate about mental health and she continues to serve people, including kids, this way through counseling and as a CASA, C-A-S-A, CASA Child Advocate. She cares. She'll bring her skills and passion to the board and you will not only appreciate her abilities, but you'll also become fast friends with her, no matter what side of an issue you're on. So my question to you is, are you making the right choice for our students? When you make this decision, which is an important one, I would, I would keep in mind three Rs. Michelle is relevant, she's relational and she's real. She's relevant. She's a Wassa graduate who experienced a lot of life experiences during school. She's also a Wassa parent, so she's extremely relevant, understanding the issues students face today. She's relational. You will not, you will not find a person who listens better, who cares more or who finds common ground more effectively than Michelle. And she's real. She'll be objective, honest and reliable. She's courageous. She follows through on every promise she makes. She listens for understanding and she shares openly. And she has a unique, a unique ability to bring people together. She'll make every decision with the best interest of the students in mind. So Michelle Gleason is relevant, relational and real and our students will have a better opportunity to thrive and in the future, this will help our entire community also thrive and shine brighter. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tim. Mr. Huntington, John. Welcome.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight as one of the four candidates for the open seat. My name's John Huntington. Born and raised in Wassa. Attended school, had Mr. Boucher as a teacher at one time, so started out in a review with John Muir. Wassa East was part of the consolidation program last summer. Seen the challenges that the school district has. I think my lifelong construction background would help with a lot of the stuff that we're going to be faced with, deferred maintenance and that type of stuff with buildings and grounds. Currently, as a QA manager, we do, I do a lot of planning and forecasting with budgets and that stuff with our current business that I'm in. My wife teaches in the district in second grade, so I get that background at home and get to see that perspective. We've been through a lot of the, I looked through the survey that we had from last week and some of the engagement stuff is what I hear at home too, so have some ideas and concerns there. Hopefully, if I'm part of it, I could be a good resource and bring my opinions and move forward and, you know, we talked a lot about adversity and challenges, but last fall, I also was on the vision of the school district forward three days that was up here at Wassa East and there's a lot of positive people within the community that want to see the best from the district, so that was, that was heartwarming to be part of that because we see so much negativity in the, in the press and I think as a good board member, it's to, to weed through that too, right? And send the right message to the public that we do care and we want to do the right thing and that's, if I'm elected, that's going to be my primary responsibility and goal is to do the right thing. So, thanks again and we'll see you. Having a good night.
Thank you, John. Do you have anybody that you'd like to have say a word? Okay, thank you. Before I move us along here, I'd just like to thank the three of you for getting up and talking to us and giving us that information along with your supporters. Gives us a very good insight to all three of you and I know all three of you, so. Moving right along, now we will begin the interview portion of the meeting. Each candidate will be asked the same four questions. Board members may ask clarifying questions. The interviews will take place in open session, however, while the candidate is interviewing, the other candidates will be sequestered in the lobby outside the auditorium. When the candidate has finished their interview, they are invited to take a seat in the audience for the remainder of the interviews. So with that, I'm going to move over the first candidate and move right to Charles Berger. And the other two, you may follow Ms. Gundrum and Dr. Caldwell into the lobby. And now, I believe, Cassie, we're going to have them sit at the table. There we go. I'm going to hand this over to Mr. Bushman. And you may ask the questions.
Yep, that's the perfect spot. If you just want to turn your microphone on, give it a mic check.
Perfect. There you go.
Charles, what is your past board experience and how do you see your role as a board member?
I've actually had a few boards that I've been on, one for both the Granite Peak Ski Team and then all, I don't know if we're proud of it, but also our homeowners association. In the roles of that, it was developing the curriculum, the coaching, you know, what we were going to have for aspects to, in order to achieve student and student athlete success. We had a lot of students that were emixed at Granite Peak from both, not only area high schools, but as far as Anago and others that all wanted to go and see excellence. We were proud that one of our students, a student athlete, had actually gone on to the Junior Olympics and while on a business trip, it was incredible to say, I just won, not only one, but two of the major events in the entire nation and get to give a little counseling to the parents. What should we do next? College or US Ski Team? I'll not tell you what I did, but let's just say it went towards education first. What I hope to bring to the board and what I look to do is, you know, I see that the way that curriculum is changing and I see our marketplace being changed quite a bit for, that these young grads are going to go into. I've seen the impacts of AI now forcing people that otherwise had incredible opportunities in both developing I've seen the impacts of AI now forcing people that otherwise had incredible opportunities in both developing games for Microsoft, applications, et cetera, now being replaced. And I know that there are some of the skills that we have that are never going to go away. But for others, our graduates that are leaving, we want to make sure that we're preparing them for basically an education that's going to be able to empower them to either leverage that but not be replaced by it. And I think that we're at a pivotal time, both in the district budget-wise. I know that our financial status gets to be a challenge. I know that our deferred maintenance is high. As I did some research, we're not the worst. Madison is significantly more than ours. But I know that we have our hurdles ahead of us.
Thank you. Number two, should you be elected to the board, what would be your top priority?
It's got to be trying to fiscally solve that deferred maintenance. I know that there are a lot of federal grants out, and I also know that there are organizations that help school districts like ours engage with major corporations to overcome these types of debts. I met one gentleman, I believe I gave his, I've got his card, his contact info, but he even helps districts like ours go and get national funding to build stadiums, to build the domes, things like that that I know Wausau strives for as we compete with other districts. Right now, it's no secret that those districts that are having these types of opportunities, both for their student athletes, they're thriving. They're seeing enrollments going up, and I don't want to see Wausau lose its competitiveness because we have to focus on that debt upfront and don't have that flexibility for their future.
Thank you. Question number three, are you available to fulfill board responsibilities and duties?
Yes, although I do travel occasionally from time to time nationwide in support of clients, I always make sure to schedule that around other commitments, whether to John Muir Cross Country Meet or a softball game. That's it. My children come first.
Excellent. And last question, Charles, number four, do you plan on running for election in the spring?
I do, I do. Thank you.
I think that concludes all of your questions.
Okay. Any other questions?
Any follow-up questions, board members?
I just want to mention your, I mentioned curriculum.
Yep.
My hopes are, sorry. Ah, there it is. Ah, like usually I'm loud enough. You mentioned in your answer to the first question, you talked about curriculum and you talked about budget. I want to give you a chance to dig in a little deeper to the second part of that question, which was, what do you see your role as a board member being?
So it's trying to balance. We see that there are obviously new initiatives that are being expelled, or I should say, given to other students at other districts. And if we can find a way to balance the current curriculum with also making sure that the budget's being met, because otherwise, if we don't have the money to do something, we can't come up with that net new opportunity. As I spoke with Mr. Vigut last week, it was imperative that we're all looking at this looming amount of debt because of the referendum that didn't pass, and it's going to cause some shortfalls within the district. I'd like to go and work with the board to find that we can go and balance that so we do not limit what the students' learning objectives and possibilities are. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Can you get a hold of the next?
I think Josh, Josh is getting him.
Josh, you got it?
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Do you just make sure your microphone is working? Still on, good, awesome. Four questions that we have. The first question is, what is your past board experience, and how do you see your role as a board member?
My past board experience was only leading a board, actually, at Peaceful Solutions Counseling, just for a couple of years. So part of the Community Foundation, we kind of stay away from boards, so yeah, that's my only experience, just the two years with Peaceful Solutions, and it was a smaller board, more of a guidance board. And it was a good experience. I had some great leaders on that board. It went very well. And then the second part of that question was?
How do you see your role as a board member?
Well, a little different than that experience, but I see my position as representing our community. And like I said in my speech, putting children's needs first, students' needs first. Being a good listener in the community, I'd love to, you know, do more of going to the school. I'll go to Franklin, you know, and engage with school staff, community members, and just listen deeply to what's going on in our community, which I know a little bit about. But I think I would, you know, obviously do that a little bit more.
Thank you. Question number two, should you be elected to the board, what would be your top priority?
I think rebuilding the trust is probably the number one priority. I know that's important for our community to see that we're a strong board and care about students and teachers. So with transparency and communication, so part of that is really listening to all points of view and engaging with community members to learn more about that and be transparent and communicate what we're working on with the community. I spoke with a previous board member just to learn what her experience was like, and she helped me just understand that really being a clear communicator in our community is helpful. You know, because sometimes people don't understand really what's happening. So to be that arm in the community, communicating with our community members will be really important.
Thank you. Question number three, are you available to fulfill board responsibilities and duties?
That's why I'm here, right? Yeah, I do have some other priorities, but I am willing to prioritize this over those. I'm heavily involved in some volunteer work. So I'll just have to figure out. I've been pretty good at shifting around priorities, and yeah, I will make the time. This will be right under my family and work and coaching.
And the final question, do you plan on running for election in the spring?
You know, I think Mr. Sillers asked that when we interviewed a week ago, and I nodded, and yeah. I mean, I will do that.
Any following or clarifying questions from the board?
Check, check, check. When you say you would be putting students' needs first, do you feel that currently students' needs aren't be putting first, or who would you be putting them above others?
No, I feel you've done a great job. I have two kids in the district and have no concerns. Yeah, and really great stuff happening at Wausau East that was fun to hear about. Obviously, putting kids' needs first there in Franklin, that was really, really great, inspiring to hear. So yeah, thank you.
Any other comments?
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Hey, John, do you want to just give a quick mic check to make sure your mic is?
Hello?
Four questions. First question, what is your past board experience, and how do you see your role as a board member?
So past board experience, the Wausau RC Sportsman was Model Airplane Club within Wausau that started in the 60s. And I've been passionate about that since my early teens and sat on the board for almost 20 years and was the president of that club for a couple of years as well. Just, it was a vast different demographic of people that were part of that, and it was to try to do the best thing for the 100 people that we had within the club and organization and making it a good experience for everybody that came out to enjoy the facility we had out in Sunnyvale.
Question number two, should you be elected to the board, what would be your top priority?
My top priority would probably be community engagement, to build back community trust. As much as we want to say it's the Wausau School District or the city of Wausau, it's all together, right? It all has to work as one, and to just do the right thing and try to push that motive forward that we're all in this together. And we need to get stronger as a community, which includes our school district.
Number three, are you available to fulfill board responsibilities and duties?
Yes.
And the final question, John, is do you plan on running for election in the spring?
I would run for election in the spring, yes.
Thank you. Any follow-up or clarifying questions from the board?
Go ahead, Sarah.
So, John, thank you for sharing with us about your 20 years of experience with the Sunnydale Board. I don't think you had a chance to answer the second part of that question, which is, how would you see your role as a board member? How would you see your role as a board member?
How would I see it? Just to try to be open and bring a collective personality and mindset to each and every meeting and put the school district's best interests forward, right? And not have any personal agendas within my decision-making.
Any follow-up? Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Or if you have any follow-up, go ahead.
I just want to say thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight, so thanks.
You bet. Continuing to follow up on this agenda, item 11, Board of Education may entertain a motion to convene in the closed session pursuant to state statute 19.851F. If there's any need to go into closed session, we would have to state a specific reason for doing that. Otherwise, we will not.
To go into closed session, but as I wasn't here when the original, is it okay if I address them briefly?
Well, let me follow up with that then, and then I'll pass it back to you. Agenda item 12, discussion and potential action to appoint the qualified elector of the Wausau School District to fill a vacancy in the Wausau School District. The vacancy is for an unexpired term and will be for a term commencing on October 13th and running through April 26, 2026. All right, so with that, I'm going to open it up for questions, if you have questions, for discussion among the board members at this point in time. Go ahead.
So I apologize for the four of you, three of you, that I wasn't here when you made your original statements. You may know I'm working on a PhD, and I was in Spokane, Washington, doing schoolwork. So the first thing I want to say is just thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for putting your name forward. I did a little research on this, and there are roughly 50 million students in public schools in this country and roughly 82,000 school board members. That means that all of our students are being represented by 24,000ths of 1% of people in this country. So doing this matters. Putting your name forward matters. Being a part of this really matters. So I just want to say thank you for that. I also do want to, as the woman sitting up here, and the only woman sitting up here right now, say that asking for representation is not sexist or racist. With our faculty at Gonzaga, which is where I'm getting my PhD, they took these things into consideration in hiring a man for their latest tenure track faculty member because the two before that that were hired were both women. These are not problems. Representation is not a problem. We had a beautiful student from Wausau East, Lucas, thank you for bringing her forward, who talked about how when she could see herself, that was where her confidence, belonging, and leadership and resilience came through. So all of you are representing your community, so thank you for that. Thank you for representing the people that look to you, the students, the families, the communities, the organizations. Just thank you for being here.
Well-stated, Sarah. Appreciate that. And as Sarah stated, the fact that she was not here at the last one. I was not here either, because that was the celebration of my 50th anniversary with my wife. We took a cruise at that time, so I won't go any further than that, but to tell you that it was good enough reason, I think, at least in my point of view. But over and above that, I've read all the information that has been handed in by all of the candidates, seven of them, and four that are the three that interviewed today. I know you all well, and this is putting me in a one difficult position. But to be able to select one of the three of you, it's tremendous because I know we have tremendous people here. And the community, I think, is very supportive in the fact that you have applied for this position, and we're very happy that you applied for this position. So thank you. And I would just concur with what Sarah has stated, we appreciate the quality. So with that, I'm going to continue to move on. Once the interviews have been completed, I will open the floor for the board for any kind of discussion whatsoever at this point in time. If there's any discussion that we need to go through, or if you're ready to pass the ballots, we can continue to go that way. Do you have a comment? Give that mic, there you go.
I'm number eight. Thank you, Glenn. One, my first question is to you, actually, Jim, whoever the new appointee is, will they take over assignments that you had Ms. Roush doing?
Well, that's going to be a discussion, and once we get this taken care of, we'll get through this evening, and then we'll have a discussion about who would be going on to take up those responsibilities later, but at the next meeting.
Okay. So with that part in mind, I just, I guess, want to maybe even to share with the community in general the time commitment and whether it's like I'm on CISA 9, attending resolutions and going to state convention. The other things that we do, we don't just, you know, come twice a month and sit at the table for two hours and sometimes it feels like we talk about the exact same stuff every month. You know, you have meeting prep time to go over the agendas. Jim and I both attended the WAS, the WAS, as it's short, day in Madison, spent the whole day down there. Remember, we have school visits. We get one, two, maybe three assignments for places to visit and interact with the principals and staff. If you're invited to activities at the schools, family nights, those kinds of things, you know, making the best attempt to get to those, attending graduation, even if you're not the board member handing out the diplomas, senior nights, award nights, helping, whether it's with the ones from Community Foundation, as I have in the past, Builders Association, you know, handing out those, being present at those. And Jim represents us on the WAS District 5 or from District 5 on that board. And all of us are welcome to attend that regional meeting that's actually coming up here in November, too. So there's a lot of other time that you may not realize that you're involved. Depending upon what's on our agenda, you might be making emails and calls to Kale or to Katie or Julie or John or Tabitha even. You know, there's a lot of interaction that happens that the public don't see, and that's all a part of our job.
Well-stated. It's a busy time. It can be very busy, and it does take the time to be a part of it. And I want to commend this board in the fact that with the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, there's an award system. award system for participation and getting involved with follow-up professionalism and things of that fashion that school boards do. And this board has been very active and has been awarded many awards due to the fact that they've been putting the time in. So, I'm going to take that time to follow up with what Corey just stated. It is, it's a pleasure to be with this board and to be with these people that have, believe me, many different points of view and I'm a big proponent of different points of view because you find the best answers when you have different points of view and we have seen that with this board and it's been a very cohesive board for the last several years and I'm very proud to be a part of it. So, with that, if that is the end of the discussion that we have with our board members here, Cassie, do you want to walk us through the voting process now? The ballots have already been handed out, so we have those in front of us.
There it goes. All right, board members, you have your ballots in front of you. It is a ranking ballot, so as Mr. Nicolai has withdrawn his candidacy, please strike him from your ballot and then rank the remaining candidates and please sign the bottom of your ballot to make it valid. Mr. Bushman's going to be collecting those ballots and we'll be doing a tally down here.
Well, the tally is in, there is no tie. And Mr. Berger, congratulations. Michelle, thank you for your effort tonight. John, thank you for your applying as well. Three very good candidates, thank you. Mr. Berger, if you would then come up and Cassie, you will then give the oath. Charles, if you'd like to take that seat at the end, that'd be fine, to finish off this evening. And then we'll continue on. You're welcome to the board. I'm going to pause and congratulate you. It's very difficult for me to applaud any one of the three of you that had won this because why, it's a tough decision. So, thank you and congratulations, welcome aboard and we moving forward. With that, we're going to the agenda item number fourteen. We're going to have a, excuse me. I've been so concerned about being involved with the voting here, we'll have to move on. Dr. Katie Conwell and Ms. Julie Shell will give us a brief presentation on the consolidation and the positive that's going on with it. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. We are here to give you a brief consolidation update. We just will review some of the things we did this past spring to build relationships among those consolidating schools, talk a little bit about the summer work that took place to prepare the schools for fall, talk about the celebrations they've already had at those consolidated schools and some challenges we are still facing. And the best part is to hear what our principals think of the consolidated schools with some principal shout-outs. Just to review, the consolidated schools, Grant to Thomas Jefferson, Lincoln to G D Jones, Hewitt, Texas to Riverview, Hawthorne Hills to John Marshall and Franklin, four K Academies except for Riverview to Lincoln, now Lincoln Early Learning Academy, and then other schools impacted by consolidation, Red Granite to Rib Mountain.
Good evening. I just want to take a moment to highlight so many of the wonderful events that happened across the district this spring. Our receiving schools literally opened their doors and welcomed families, students and staff with open arms in some of the most incredible ways. The schools held events for families and students, they held events for staff, they held events for students and you see some of the pictures there, literally in some, the red carpets were rolled out, which was really incredible, but in all of them, students and staff lined sidewalks and hallways cheering and holding signs and welcoming them. It was really incredible moments. And then at the bottom, we won't play the videos, but each of the schools held a final farewell and they were so well-attended and so unique in the most incredible ways. Lincoln, there were so many former students reconnecting with teachers and those moments are captured in that video there. Hewitt, Texas, there was a time capsule, no one knew quite where it was, but one person showed up and knew the exact location, so they opened it in front of a crowd. At Grant, a hundred and four-year-old alum showed up, got to tour the school and reminisce about her days there, that was amazing. And at Hawthorne Hills, there was a time capsule behind the cornerstone and the school's very first principal, along with one of the first students to go through, were there to open it. So, so many incredible moments, we won't play the videos, but they are linked there for your review.
Just got to get our order right here. There you go. So, there were a lot of things that happened to do the consolidation, there was a lot of work done in the winter and the spring, but the meat of the meal really took place during the summer. Over two-hundred-and-eighty rooms were packaged up and get ready to move to other places, over sixteen thousand boxes, seven thousand chairs and seven thousand desks and over four thousand non-boxed items for a total eighteen thousand plus assets moved during the summer. Also, there were over twenty thousand library books that were packaged up and put into the system into a different location and over six thousand books who found new homes through this process. So, we want to give a huge thank you for all the people that were involved, the moving company diversified, our custodial staff, teachers, pupil services, support staff, food services, librarians, principals, and everyone else to help package and move all the materials. They did so much of the work and were so appreciative and grateful for all the reference. Not only that, but in order to prepare for this September and the opening of schools, a number of items at the Lincoln location needed to be changed and updated so that the four K Academy facility could be ready for our youngest learners.
The fun slide here about celebrations. First, just a huge celebration is the leaders that we have at our elementary buildings. Being an elementary principal is a unique and layered role and I think many of them new to the career and new in their experience to this. This was a really huge feat that I think all of us as a board, as a community, the entire committee that worked through this really is a celebration because this, closing five schools, repurposing one, is really a masterful accomplishment and I really appreciate our building leaders who lifted up and did a lot of this collaboration in the buildings themselves with their teachers and staff. But the move was successful. As Ralph mentioned, you know, we got everybody in and classes started and that was a huge success. What we're seeing now are students coming together. We have students who are forming new friendships and relationships from, you know, with students who they maybe didn't have in their circle of friends before. So, that's been really interesting and fun. It's kind of like when you go to middle school and all of the west-side schools and east-side schools come together and you find new friendships and the same with high school. So, that's been really fun. They're all taking on these new expectations. So, bringing two schools and communities together, when you think about all the expectations and the routines and structures, each one of our schools has its own entity and when you bring them together into one space, learning new expectations and new pathways and flow within the building is extremely challenging. So, they're all learning these new expectations together, staff are coming together, forming new friendships, forming new collaborations, looking at new opportunities and that's been really excited, exciting to see. They have larger teams in many of these spaces, so that's also powerful. When you have greater space to collaborate and have teams working together, it can be extremely powerful on some of the things that you can do to meet the needs of our learners. Our encore teams in those bigger buildings where they are full-time have really appreciated their time together in those full-time schools. And as mentioned, the family nights that we've had this year with our new collaborated families in these spaces has been extremely successful with some of the highest attendance rates that they've seen. So, those are some great challenges, or great celebrations that we look to continue to move forward with. And as we blend these two schools together and work through some of these spaces, there's also some works that are in progress and to be expected. We have, we're tight in some spaces, especially Franklin, you know, is using every square inch and centimeter that we have there to meet the needs of our learners, but that's part of our intention, was using our space most efficiently and effectively. So, we've got some things we're working through in terms of flow in the buildings. We're also building new culture. I think it's really expected to see that when you have both student cultures and community of learners as well as adult learners blending together, there's a lot of new things that are a great opportunity to rebuild as one new space. Things like drop-off and how we feed our kids and student movement in the building, but most importantly, some of those teacher systems and structures in the building, our WACOSS system, which is our levels of support, our former E M L S S systems, how we provide supports to students, how we do behavior response, how we work through our SIP plan development and work as teams. You know, those are things that building principals and leaders are still working through and working with their teams to build these new opportunities and, you know, that fresh start on a blend of what works well in both of those schools and systems coming together. So, we're working through some of those great opportunities and like in our other buildings, our encore teams at Franklin and John Marshall are not full-time, so there's still a bit of some fragmentation that goes and the other schools experience that as well. We do have some shared staff in some of our other smaller buildings where there's just a need to blend two schools together to bring a full F T E to some of those spaces. So, we're still working through some of those pieces with our encore teams. But looking to, we've got great leaders who are doing a great job with supporting their staff, their students, their families through this process and I have the utmost confidence in them that they will continue to build some great bridges and pathways forward. So, with that, we just wanted to share with you some shout-outs that each of these principals has put together about their process and where they've landed in their current status around consolidation. So, I'm going to start, to know Kara Rakowski is to know a great human. If any of you have not had an opportunity to work with Kara in her early learning and four K experience, she is a true champion. And that taking over Lincoln as a complete new early learning space was a huge feat compared to the spaces that they were in. So, I have the utmost respect for her and what she's done there. And she says, "The consolidation of three separate four K learning academies into Lincoln Early Learning Academy has been a truly remarkable undertaking and we are thrilled with the progress we've made. Our staff is diligently continuing to settle into their new spaces, learning new routines and providing outstanding support to our learners and their families. The energy and spirit in our new location are palpable. We are especially grateful that our new structure allows us to collaborate regularly and share conversations centered on supporting our youngest learners. This focused environment is already enhancing our commitment to develop mentally appropriate practices and fostering a joyful start to their educational journey. This seamless transition would not have been possible without the extraordinary efforts of our building and grounds crew and our head custodian. Their tireless work and dedication to making the move to our new space is seamless for all staff and students deserves immense gratitude and recognition. We are grateful to the board and community and dedicated space of Lincoln School. It was allocated for us to create a nurturing early learning community that is the foundation and starting point of learners in our district." And that again is Kara Rakowski from Lincoln. Continuing with shout-outs, this is from Jen Davison and Phil Beck from G D Jones Elementary School. "The G D Jones students and staff are celebrating the relationships being developed and routines that we have already established. Throughout these past couple of weeks, we have started whole-school goal-setting to continue to support the routines needed to have a successful learning environment. We also had a successful first family night in September with a scavenger hunt around the building to continue to familiarize families and students with the building, while tomorrow night, we will host our October family night with an ice cream social and read-along. We truly appreciate all the teamwork that is happening to start our year off on a positive note."
And this statement comes from Megan Corrock, the principal at Thomas Jefferson, and Matt Schilling, the associate principal. "Students have shown incredible adaptability and positivity, embracing new friendships, shared routines, and a strong sense of community. The consolidation has also created new learning opportunities, broader social connections, and a deeper sense of unity that supports their growth in every way. In regards to the partnership between the principals, our leadership styles complement each other, balancing structure with creativity to make thoughtful, student-centered decisions and support staff through a shared vision." Again, that's from Megan and Matt at Thomas Jefferson.
This is from Sarah Budney and Caitlin Landerman from Riverview. "The consolidation from Hewitt, Texas to Riverview has fostered a strong sense of unity and inclusion with excitement evident throughout the school. Staff members are collaborating across grade levels and content areas, bringing fresh ideas and energy to their instruction. There's a shared enthusiasm among both students and staff as they form new teams, traditions, and a stronger school community together. We are thankful for all that Hewitt, Texas meant to our families and community and will continue to grow into our new Riverview family." And from Krista Treter, Franklin Elementary School principal, "Our combined staff appreciate having more colleagues to plan and work with and we are enjoying watching many students make new friendships."
And this quote is from Andy Reiki at John Marshall. "At John Marshall, our students have come together to foster new friendships and have supported each other in creating a sense of belonging and purpose." And next, this is from Rachel Jean at Rib Mountain. "I started the year with Rib and Red Granite staff around this quote. We may take different paths, but we're headed toward the same destination, working together for the success of every student. I'm proud to share that this quote comes to life within the walls of our building. Both staff communities have collaborated and learning together through drills, sharing hallways with care and building new connections. I personally even had the..."
I personally even had the joy of joining Red Granite to sing to Rib Mountain one morning. It's been a wonderful start and I'm so proud of how well things have gone." And that's Rachel Jean at Rib Mountain. And lastly, this is from Maude Mangan, the principal of Red Granite Charter School. "I would describe the merger as a strong balance between support and independence. Rachel and I have maintained a positive and open line of communication, which has helped us prevent most issues and quickly and effectively address any concerns that do arise. School processes, staff collaboration, and student interactions have flowed relatively smoothly and our Red Granite community is truly grateful for the resources and support we receive through this merger, including but not limited to shared pupil services, health aid support, and ongoing administrative collaboration." And that's from Maude at Red Granite. That is all we have for you right now. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Yeah, just, just two points. First of all, recognition, and Ralph, you touched on some of the logistics that had to happen, but from the moment that we said yes, we were going to do this consolidation, the clock was ticking, right? I mean, the kids were coming in September to their new schools regardless. So, all of the things that happened, I'd say behind the scenes, but they were obviously front and center to many folks, you know, the four of you and everyone else in the administration, Ryan and his team that have worked so hard. I, I don't think people can fully appreciate all that goes into consolidations and transitions. I mean, we, I try to do this during my, my day job and our best efforts, I would say, I would give us a B. They're very, very difficult with all the different variables happening. So, the fact that, for me at least, it was almost a non-event, thank you. I only heard from one person over the summer when I was out to dinner, asking me if I knew what we actually did to them. I can tell you who laid her kale, but anyways, he was saying it in jest, but, you know, and completely supported it. But, and the second point that I'd like to make is that if, just to go back a few years, if everyone remembers, I don't even know who was on the board when we passed the referendum, but working on the secondary schools, remember we had the hundred-and-eighty-some-million-dollar referendum that failed, we pared it back to the one-twenty to focus on secondary and safety and security upgrades to elementaries. And then we had always said, part of the strategy was, we were going to look at elementaries after that time, figure out what made, made sense to consolidate, which we did, which you guys executed, and then figure out now, what is the next phase, you know, of the strategic vision. And I think there was a lot of groundwork laid for that in March, you know, with the summit that, that Kale held up here. So, I, I think this is another very, very exciting time for the district because while one, you know, kind of clouded us is settling, I'm anxious to see what the next one is going to bring because I think we're in a much stronger position today than we were five years ago. I think the district is, is in a much better place on every front, frankly, and this consolidation was kind of, at least in my head, it was the capstone of what the last four or five years have been. And now it's time to look forward again and see, see what the next ones can bring. So, thank you all very much.
Pat did a tremendous job summarizing all of that, I appreciate that, but I do want to commend this team, I want to commend Mr. Bushman and the leadership, it all comes down to leadership when this happens. I've seen throughout my years in education, when consolidation takes place, usually a superintendent gets fired. So, you're not there, I just wanted to let you know that. I also want to shout out, when it comes to communication, Deanna, you've done a tremendous job and the whole idea of communicating with our community, one of the reasons why we haven't had anything that we could hear was because you took care of that behind the scenes. And just speaking on the radio today, I, I will say this, people didn't even realize consolidation was taking place because communication was taking place. And when you communicate, you eliminate a lot of the small problems so that they don't become big problems. So, I've become long-winded enough, but you deserve the commendation and tremendous job. Thank you. If anybody wanted, wants to put an exclamation mark on that, you may do that as well. Get in the punctuation, Pat. Okay, I know a game's going on. Not quite? Okay. Well, then we have plenty of time. Okay, continuing on, Mr. Vogut will give us an update on the sale of Hawthorne Hills, Hewitt, Texas, and Grant Elementary Schools. Where are we at?
Perfect, thank you. Thank you so much. I wanted to give you a quick update on the sale of those buildings, as was mentioned in the consolidation presentation, we did sell, or we did close those three elementary schools, Hawthorne Hills, Hewitt, Texas, and Grant Elementary. Decision was made to pursue the sale of the buildings and we did a third-party market analysis to give us an idea of the value of the sale of those buildings. And then district team along with board member interviewed three potential real estate partners, eventually settling on a local commercial real estate agent with twenty-plus years of commercial real estate experience. So, a really quick update on each school. Hawthorne Hills Elementary School sold for one-point-five million. Hewitt, Texas Elementary School sold for eight-hundred-thousand dollars. Grant Elementary School is currently listed for five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Any questions on the specific?
One, Josh, on Grant, the fact that that one fell through.
Yep.
It's common practice in real estate to get pre-approval, especially when you're talking that large amount of money. Can we ensure that that happens again on the next offer, so to speak, before we take it off or don't accept any other offers so we don't lose this time again?
Certainly, yeah. And it is important to note that the party that was interested in Grant did have pre-approval.
Then why was the financing declined?
I, I don't know, that was just the communication we received.
Okay, so, so we have to ask our representative to do more due diligence on these people because that should not happen in a, in a transaction of that size?
Any other questions or feedback from the board? All right, thank you so much.
Mr. Vogut, just a question. And because I, I feel the same way that Mr. McKee feels and the fact that we lost that. Did they lose the financing due to any reason why Grant or because Grant is a historical site? Is there, does that play a part in this? Because their limitation in what they can do with the facade is quite limited and it costs more to work within that facade when you're working within that, the cost factor. So, my, my expert on the left here in construction, I'm thinking, wouldn't that play a part? No, I'm looking at Corey, I'll pass it over. You know, I, I'm not putting you on the spot, Corey, I don't, don't mean to do that, but I'm very concerned about the fact that we have a historical site that we're trying to sell and if that plays a part in it, that's a problem for our district.
Nothing along those lines was communicated to us, but everything you said about those considerations is true. Any other questions?
Thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Agenda item fourteen C, the Education Operations Committee meeting, was there a follow-up on that? That's on my agenda here. No? Okay, well then we'll move right along. Agenda item number fifteen, Education Operations Committee meeting, primary care clinic. At the September Education Operations Committee meeting, information was presented related to recommendation to enter into a contract for services to provide a direct primary care clinic option for the district. This topic was mentioned, was mentioned in an earlier board meeting and the recommendation is now ready to be presented. So, Ms. Gundrum?
Maybe. We do not have any significant change in the information from what we presented at the last meeting. The one thing that I would highlight is that the doctor we had thought was going to staff the clinic has left the organization and there's a different doctor, he happens to be in the audience with us along with Anovia. I'm not sure if there are any other questions that the board had, but I did want to point that out because we did highlight that. The, the error still exists on the recommendation page, it needs to be twenty-twenty-six. And essentially, we are ready to go. The doctor that will be taking over the clinic upon approval is a long-term Wausau resident, however, so very familiar with the area and I think that's great news for our staff.
Okay, any follow-up questions with Ms. Gundrum? If not, I'm seeking a motion to, for approval to enter into a contract for a direct primary care clinic with Anovia.
I'll make the motion.
Any follow-up questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Thank you. Motion carries, thank you. Agenda item fifteen A two, District A C P Plan. At the September Education Operations Committee meeting, C T E Coordinator John Winter gave a brief update on the District A C P Plan. And I don't think there's any additional comments, so with that, I'm going to go ahead. I'm seeking a motion for approval of the Wausau School District twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six Education for Employment E four E and then Academic Career Plan, which is identified A C P.
Second?
Any follow-up questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. Continuing on, Agenda item sixteen, Board Member Professional Growth and Development Report. Anyone have anything to share at this point in time? Of any follow-up of what you have been doing in the last two and a half weeks? If not, I'm going to continue on, going to Legislative Lausanne. Mr. Sillers will deliver Legislative Lausanne update, if there is an update.
I reviewed what the Assembly will be taking up tomorrow in this session. None of it is school-related. The tidbits that revolve around anything school-related between funding and potential future changes at D P I have already shared with staff so they can start thinking about, they would have a whole year to formulate some kind of solution. So, we're in a good position with that. The Senate is, State Senate is not in session at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Bushman, any other comments?
Just two quick comments, I want to thank the potential candidates for the board. I really felt like all seven candidates, but the three that were here tonight, four that were here tonight, really felt like quality candidates and people who are really in it for the right reasons, that were all here for the veteran of, of the kids and the students. So, I thank everybody for throwing their name into the hat. It's a daunting thing to take, to take that risk, so I, I thank everybody for that. To our current board member, in honor of just completing Wisconsin School Board Week, I'd like to extend my sincere gratitude to the Wausau School Board for their tireless commitment to our students, staff, families, and community. May not always feel like it, but know that you are appreciated for your efforts to ensure a high-quality, supportive, and safe learning environment for every one of our kids. Your work does not go unnoticed and your governance is an extremely important component of the Wausau community. Thank you for your unwavering service and dedication to the educational excellence of our district, we appreciate it.
Greatly appreciate that. Any, well, let's put this into the, the Lausanne report, would you please put that into the official record, appreciate that. Thank you, board members, for an evening of questioning and moving forward and thank you again, our candidates that then did show up today, so greatly appreciate. Do you have something else?
Just one quick comment, Principal Barth is here, he's, he's going to be showing a tour of the facilities if you guys are interested, anybody in the audience that's interested as well. Is Luke's going to walk us around and show us some of the things that the referendum dollars purchased most recently?
Sounds good, thank you very much. I'm seeking a motion to adjourn?
So, moved?
Then we got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone.